It's called order the regular meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The invocation will be given by Councilman Lanning.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
We have the approval of the minutes for the work session for October first, two thousand and nineteen. So move.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven six.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Members of council, this ordinance authorizes two permanent cash transfers, both out of the city's general fund, firstly to fund the senior levy, levy fund for the city's share of a ceiling project that occurred over there. There's also applicable appropriations in the second section of this ordinance for that same purpose, and a one point five million dollar permanent cash transfer out of the city's general fund, which represents approximately one-fourth of the self-insurance funding to our medical self-insurance fund. And then there, in addition, there's an appropriation revision for two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which is to cover a portion of the general obligation bond retirement tapping for the subsequent ordinances on bond issuances. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I recommend approval.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven six has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven seven.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of two million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding debt charges, savings, certain, certain of the city's outstanding various purposes, purpose bonds, series two thousand and eleven dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, this evening, we have five ordinances before you, which will deal with the city's intention to move forward with some bonded debt. The first two, which Mr. Malinowski will explain, deal with the refunding, or what we would think of as refinancing, some older debt to take advantage of some better interest rates. These next two ordinances, seventy-seven and seventy-eight, are strictly for that refinancing, and the, and it is anticipated that the, keeping with the same term as the existing debt, will save approximately four to five hundred thousand dollars by moving forward. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. That sums up what we're doing. We are looking to refund the two thousand and eleven series and the two thousand and fifteen series, keeping the term exactly the same. We are intending on selling these bonds this December and also closing this year on the refunding, and you'll see ordinances subsequent to this for new money issues that'll come up later, but I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven seven has passed. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven eight.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of seven million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding for debt charges, savings, certain of the city's outstanding various purpose improvement and refunding bonds, series two thousand and fifteen dated March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Nothing further.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh seven nine.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of four million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs of constructing, reconstructing, grading, draining, paving, and otherwise improving streets within the city's Headlands area, including Bell Metal Road, Brooksdale Road, and Orchard Road, and including improvements of related sanitary facilities in cooperation with the County of Lake and related water and drainage facilities, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, and this is the first of three, which represent new bonded debt for the city. These are broken up essentially by category. This first category would consolidate the city's portion for what we've known as the several phases of the Headlands Road reconstruction project. We had re, we had financed the city's portion of Marigold in a past debt issuance, I believe it was that the last we did in a year ago.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So this would conclude it. Now, we have more work to do out there, but in working with the city engineer, we feel pretty comfortable that what remains with this, with the funds received through the bond issuance, we should be able to fund the remainder with regular revenues, so we ask for your approval.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight zero.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of two million, thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of paying costs of constructing, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving a new regional emergency response facility, and acquiring, clearing, improving, and equipping its site, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the caption is pretty self-explanatory. This is the city's portion of the emergency response facility, which we located on a property currently in the process of being acquired from the Lost Nation Airport behind Station Number Four. If you have any additional questions about that project that we haven't gone over, and I know council has laboriously looked over this at several budgeting sessions both past and probably touch on it yet this year, Chief Searls will be happy to answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, quick question. What is the total cost?
Right now, it looks like it's going to be about three point one million. We've received about half a million dollars already allocated in grant dollars through the state budget, and additional funds would be local that we would be adding to this project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight oh has been approved. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight one.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of seven million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of refunding for debt charges, savings, certain of the city's outstanding various purpose improvement and refunding bonds, series two thousand and fifteen dated March thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Nothing further.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight one has passed.
Checkbook is closed.
Pardon?
The checkbook is closed.
Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight two.
An ordinance of levy assess, to levy assessments for the construction of certain sidewalks in Zone Four B associated with the two thousand and eighteen sidewalk repair and pedestrian safety program in the city of Menor, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. City sidewalk contractor A&amp;J Construction Incorporated has completed repairs of sidewalks in Zone Four B, which is the zone roughly between Blackbrook Golf Course and Veterans Park, Hendricks Road and Lake Shore Boulevard. Approximately three hundred and ninety slabs of concrete sidewalk were replaced through the assessment process on a hundred and seventy-eight properties. Cost for construction of the assessed portion of the work totaled sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Administrative costs for mailing and advertising totaled thirty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents per property. Interest for each parcel being assessed has been calculated at two percent of the construction and administrative costs per year for three years. The total aggregate cost of the assessment includes the cost of construction, administrative costs, and interest, which totals seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Publication for the notice of estimated assessments ran in the news herald for three weeks starting August thirty-first, as required by the high revised code. Residents were provided two weeks to make objections to the estimated assessments on file with the clerk of council. Written objections were required to be received by five P.M. on October fourth. No objections were filed with the clerk of council. This legislation is an ordinance per the high revised code for assessment for the construction of sidewalks over the parcels shown on Exhibit A. Want council approval of this ordinance? The total assessment against each parcel of land can be paid to the Director of Finance of the City of Menor within thirty days. After the thirty-day period to pay expires, the assessment totals will be sent to the Lake County Auditor for collection with the general taxes and six semi-annual installments over a three-year period. Additionally, a notice will be published in the news herald stating that such assessment has been made and is on file in the office of the clerk of council for inspection by the public. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just want to add one comment to this, because I think council would find, would find this interesting. As we get further along in this program now, what year is this now, Dave?
Seven.
We're getting to the, to the phases that where we have newer neighborhoods and neighborhoods that are, have much better condition of their sidewalks overall. Of approximately nine hundred slabs that required repairs in this zone, five hundred of those were paid for by the city and just about four hundred by the property owners. So we've reached a tipping point where there are more slabs that we're paying for because of street tree issues and manholes that are ours that, so it's turning out to be, we're in pretty good shape overall, and we're reach, reached that point where we're actually spending more than the property owners are on these phases now. And that'll continue as time goes forward, as we continue to go back to the phases and, you know, some, you know, five to ten years from now that have been replaced, so I thought you'd find that interesting.
I have one question for Mr. Swigger. This curing agent that they used on the sidewalk that causes our checkerboard effect in all the neighborhoods now, will that curing agent, it's white, dissipate over the fall and winter?
I mean, it typically lights over time. Sort of milky in appearance at first, but it fades over time.
When we say over time, how much time are we talking about? Because I've had some people in the neighborhood say, hey, what's going on with this? You know, it's, we got white, we got, you know, then it looks like they're doing hopscotch down the street.
It looks pretty bright white at first, but I couldn't tell you how long this, you know, this, this'll take, but it's pretty typical of new concrete.
Well, I don't remember seeing this in some of the other neighborhoods in the past. That's why I was kind of, you know, wondering why all of a sudden this really white concrete slant.
Some of the curing agent, or some of the curing agents are clearer than others, although we could, I mean, we, we could look at either change in that specification or requiring a more clear cure.
Okay. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash oh eight two has passed. Resolution number nineteen dash R dash one one zero.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the state capital improvement program for the Lake Overlook Drive reconstruction project, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, and I'll have the city engineer go through these projects individually, but I think it's important to note that we've had a really good year with OPWC projects. The three projects that you'll be approving for final application have essentially found, realized scores through initial grading at the county level that will ensure they're being funded. So you're looking at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant dollars and with additional zero percent loan money added in there. So nice job done by our engineering department by putting together some very strong applications once again, and this has been our pattern for several years. And of course, the first one before you here is, well, the second one that we get into is, is five hundred thousand dollars for one of the Headlands Roads projects. So, Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The District Seven Ohio Public Works Committee tentatively, tentatively approved the pre-application for the Lake Overlook Drive reconstruction project in this year's round thirty-four funding cycle. City's been asked to provide a final funding application for the project. Project is expected to cost approximately one point three million dollars and would be partially funded with a five hundred thousand dollar grant and a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program. Very similar to the other projects recently constructed in the Headlands Road area, the project will reconstruct the entire length of Lake Overlook Drive from Forest Road to Cordory Road, which is about point four eight miles in length. It's a little shorter than the, than the north-south streets, which were about three-quarters of a mile in length. The project will also include the replacement of storm sewer laterals over the same length of the project. I would like to mention that the, the county sanitary, Lake County Department of Utilities will not be participating in this project. They will be considering coming back at a later date for sewer lining if necessary. As part of the application project, process, it is necessary for the city manager to be authorized by city council to submit the final application and execute the contracts, and this legislation is being presented to council to, for council action to meet the October application deadline. Construction is anticipated to begin the fall of two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Counsel? Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen dash R dash one one zero has passed.
Congratulations again, John.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Going for the trifecta, didn't he?
Yeah, trying, trying. Resolution number nineteen dash R dash one one one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the purpose of acquiring funds through the state capital improvement program for the Hopkins Road resurfacing project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, maybe you could just explain what this project is.
Yes, this project is a resurfacing project of Hopkins Road from Market Street to Menor Avenue, which is about one point five miles in length. The project is expected to cost approximately nine hundred and seventy thousand, and it will be partially funded with a, approximately a two hundred thousand dollar grant and eighty thousand dollar loan by the Ohio Public Works Commission. The project is anticipated to start in the fall of two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
The one thing I will add to this one, because this is even better, this will be a hundred percent funded project. We received a notice just before these grants were awarded that a NOAC application will be funded as well, so a hundred percent of this will be paid for by outside funds.
That's great. That's great. Counsel?
Mr. President, quick question. And this includes the bike lanes resurfacing?
Yes, it does.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?[1361.15]
basins and nine new manholes, providing the additional capacity needed in this area. Construction is expected to begin in the summer of 2020 with completion in the spring of 2021. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Resolution Number 19-R-112 has passed.
Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.
See, Mentor is bigger than we just worked for.
I know. Starting to wonder that.
Looks like Bruce struck out tonight.
I know what happened over there.
Get him in the lineup for the next meeting.
Second reading, we have none. Third reading. Ordinance Number 19-0-068.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move, oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Let her read it, please.
In ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and
the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 16.15 acres of land from R4 Single Family Residential District to RVG Village Green District for 40 residential lots in the proposed Echo Hill Manor subdivision at 8180 and 8188 Garfield Road.
Mr. President, move to table.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 19-0-068 has been tabled. Favorite part of the night? Managers' report.
Thank you, council. With election season upon us, signs have been sprouting up across the city, so many residents are reminded that our ordinance allow for one ground sign per development unit, which is your home in most cases, with a maximum area of 15 square feet, and that applies year-round. During the election cycle, however, we do allow for one additional ground sign per candidate and/or issue that is on the ballot in which the voter and the city may cast. So you can have multiple signs, as long as they're for different issues, different candidates. We also remind people that no signs are permitted to be placed in the right-of-way, including tree lawns, and all of those rules are available on our website. I'm pleased to report that our fire department has been awarded a federal grant in the amount of $545,454 for the purchase of a heavy rescue vehicle from the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. The grant funding will be used to replace the department's special services vehicle, which is a 1985 Pierce truck. The department is working on the bid specs right now, and that will go to bid in 2020. We'd also like to remind motorists to be especially alert and cautious when driving on Halloween night because of the high number of pedestrians. Children should be accompanied by a parent or responsible adult, and we remind parents that all costumes, wigs, accessories should be fire-resistant, and that the children should steer clear of candles, and that we would ask our residents to leave candles that are in the walking areas, just simply not have them in walking paths, and to also remind children to wear reflective clothing as much as possible, and then finally, be cautious with Halloween candy. And as Chief Searls likes to remind us, when in doubt, throw it out. Right, chief?
Thank you.
And to also avoid homemade treats. Pavement milling on Hendricks Hopkins Resurfacing Project has been completed. The contractor is currently in the process of performing full-depth asphalt repairs. Those should be completed this week, and we'll begin the resurfacing. The intermediate course should be installed later this week with the weather permitting, and that project should be completed by October 31st. DM Excavating will likely begin work the week of October 21st for Dominion Energy Gas Main Improvement Project on Cadel Avenue, Nolan Street, and Presley Avenue. The project will replace current steel gas mains with approximately 4,300 feet of new plastic gas main. Traffic control will be maintained throughout that project, and the anticipated completion date is December 1st. Project will require the removal of approximately 12 large mature trees on Cadel Avenue and Presley, and Dominion will be coordinating with those homeowners. They did have an arborist. We did have some discussion on this earlier this week, and they did have an arborist look at those trees, and most of them are older silver maples that quite frankly ought to be removed anyway, so this should actually be an aid to those residents, although obviously it's going to look a little different once they move through this area. So, Mr. Swigger, that coordination is happening, correct?
Correct. So we've been in contact with Dominion for a few days, most recently for the tree removal. We reviewed the, we required the arborist report and reviewed that and agreed with that. We've asked them to notify all the residents in writing as to the project in general, and then the 12 or 13 property owners that will have tree removals on them, we've asked them to provide a separate letter, and explaining the trees that are coming down and why they're being removed. We've even offered to deliver those letters for them to expedite that information to the residents. So we're currently working with them on the wording of the letter and making sure all the information is in there, and it gets to the residents in time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Swigger, are they getting another tree?
I was just going to mention that. We will let the residents know that the city would provide them with a tree if they desire one.
Thank you.
But council, I did have a pavement open cut request that I missed here. So a request of your concurrence for a cut, open cut for Dominion Energy for installation of a residential gas service at 8322 Lake Shore Boulevard, and that has been reviewed, and I believe that's a necessity, right, Dave?
Correct. Correct. Dominion would like to open cut the road to expose the existing AT&amp;T Fiber Optic Bank of lines to avoid them. So it's a long side service. They'll be boring under Lake Shore, but they do need to expose the fiber optic lines to avoid hitting them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Thank you, council. And then finally, we wish to welcome Sliman's Tavern at 7601 Mentor Avenue, and I think a lot of us were at their opening week, and it looks fantastic in there, and we want to thank them for their investment in Mentor. I think it's going to go very well for them here, and we wish them well. That's all.
That's it? Good job. Thank you. Works Correspondents.
Council is in receipt of liquor permits. One is a Trex transfer for BF Mentor LLC DBA Burger Phi to Iacafano's Family, Inc., DBA Iacafano Family, and a transfer from Mentor OSL LLC DBA Quaker Steak &amp; Lube to TA Operating LLC DBA Quaker Steak &amp; Lube. That is all.
Thank you. Thank you. Commission Committee reports. We're in possession of the meeting minutes for the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals for September 10th, 2019, the Municipal Planning Commission for September 12th, 2019, and the Tree Commission for September 25th, 2019. Old business? We have none. New business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The first bit of new business is I'd like to congratulate the Longo family on their 50th anniversary of doing business in the city. Not only they provide a great service, but they've been great citizens as well, and I want to make mention that Joe and his family always are great contributors to the city. And my second one is rather long-winded, thanks to the law director, but it's by law, so we got to do a motion here for executive session. And it reads, "To adjourn into executive session pursuant to Higher Revised Code Section 121 dot 22, Section G and I, to consider employment and compensation of a public employee or official." The second part of this motion is to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Higher Revised Code Section 121 dot 22, G and 2, to consider purchase of property for public purposes for the reason that the premature disclosure of information would give us unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interests are adverse to the general public interest.
Wow.
That would require a second.
Second.
You want to do that before we do the executive session?
You can hold off on the motion. Are there any persons before council?
Well, yes, we have one.
I think you can hold off on the, I'm just calling the roll.
Okay. So we have one person before council tonight. Mrs. Elaine Foster. Let's not make her wait.
I'm hoping I didn't have to say that again.
I gave you new business, which I skipped last time. Ms. Foster, please state your name and address.
I'll state my name.
Okay.
Elaine Foster. Resident of Mentor. Good evening, city council, the president, and all the members of the council tonight. Obviously, you all know why I'm here. It's the fall, and the deer management process is upon us, and therefore, I'm reminded of my unfortunate encounter with the deer management trusted servants in this city, and what happened to me years ago, and what continues to follow me with my job every time that I reapply every year for my license. It reminds me of what happened in this city. So I will continue to be here until something's done with this program. The City of Mentor, and I won't name names out of respect for everyone that's involved, the Natural Resource Department, the Police Department, continue to let us believe that the deer management program needs to continue, the urban slaughter in our backyards, our churchyards, our schoolyards, near bus stops where our children are lined up waiting to go to school. However, when I looked at the website that's available to residents to look at, the information about the whitetail deer population in Mentor, they have not been updated. There are no numbers indicating where we are with the program on the websites that I saw, and if someone can direct me to where that information might be, please do so. They continue to say that the deer are in ill health, that they're disease-prone, and that's just not the case. There's also a video about the coyotes. The City of Mentor says that there's accidents, that there's no natural predators, and that's why we need to continue this deer management program, that the numbers are high. We've had culling, we've had backyard slaughters in the City of Mentor for years, and the herds have been thinned drastically. And people that keep the numbers know, the overhead flyabouts know that the herds have been desperately thinned, but we don't know that, and it's not made public on the internet. There was a video about the coyotes, that there's no natural predators. The coyotes are thriving in Mentor. There are sightings all the time. There's a whole video talking about it from staff of the Natural Resource Department Division of Wildlife. So that's a fallacy. I would like to see the City of Mentor update the information given to citizens, update the residents of Mentor about the dangers that these hunted animals pose to us, which I, you know, I'm out and about in the woods, I don't see any, very little wildlife anymore in the City of Mentor. I walk my dogs, I'm not getting attacked by a coyote. It's my opinion that we need to look at, perhaps, they continue to be on the nuisance animal list. How low does it have to go before they're removed from that list? I don't see you slaughtering geese. They're a nuisance animal. I don't see that happening.
You want to close it up, Elaine?
Sure.